I'd like to call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call vote, Taja Singer-Chivilingam?
Present.
Casey Barney?
Here.
Lee Sharps?
Here.
Harold Lamos?
Here.
Fran Newton?
Here.
Other comments? We have a few people signed up. Jane Sawyer? And Bob Baker? You both want to talk about the Whipple Tree?
Just if we, if there were any questions when you come to that section.
Whipple Tree.
They're more than the Whipple Tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Tree, the Whipple House.
Well, there's a winery name.
Whipple Tree, yes.
Whipple House Tree. Okay. So you want to speak to that when we discuss it?
When I come, yes.
Okay. And Anne Laterno? Did I pronounce that correctly? Anne, what was your topic, Anne?
Well, residential trend into whatever this is.
Okay. Should we save that till the end of the agenda? If that'd be all right with you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes. We have minutes of September 11th and September 12th.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to revisit the minutes for August 21st. I noticed a couple corrections. I missed the first.
Okay. All right, we'll get to that. Let's start with the September 11th. We have a name missing. Does anybody, can anybody fill in that blank?
I didn't know who he was.
We have Chris Blank. Does anybody remember who that was?
Which line?
Line 19.
Line 19.
Yeah, line 19.
That's what he said.
When we were discussing the speed bump on Love Hill.
She'll forever be blank.
Did he sign up?
Do we still have that sign up, please?
Oh, yeah.
No, we don't. Well, if anybody knows, please let me know. Any other corrections, additions?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Line 8, I think Selectmen-
Page 1?
Yes, page 1, line 8. I think Selectmen should probably come before the list of Selectmen.
Yeah, probably. Okay.
Also, page 2, line 23. I recommend some change to that motion. I don't think it's exactly as clear as it could be. Board authorizes town administrator Smith to contact the property owners. And my understanding was we were inviting them to come to a meeting to discuss.
Well, we asked Charlie to call them. And I think that's what it was. And, you know, I'm sure we'll get an update on that. But I think the end of it was Charlie to call them to talk about it, so.
Well, then, I'd just like to note my objection to that because I believe that it was to invite them to a conversation.
Okay.
So where, where is that?
That's line 23, page 2.
Yeah.
So you want me to change that to invite?
To invite them to speak to the board. Okay. Anything else?
Page 3, line 9. Appoint Chair Newton as alternate means instead of alternative. I mean, I guess-
Oh, yes. Alternate. Absolutely, thank you. Yeah.
Also, page 3, line 18, it says Anne Lamson. It's Lamson.
Lamson, A-L-A-N, yeah. Thank you. And we have no adjourned time. I'm not sure when that happened, but.
After the non-public.
Oh, right, after the non-public. We have to look at those minutes and see what we put as an end time. Because we adjourn shortly thereafter. I mean, immediately thereafter. Okay, anything else? All right. Motion to approve the minutes of September 11th is amended.
Make that motion.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, September 12th.
Who seconded that?
Casey. September 12th. That's when we had in the office to discuss budget. Any corrections? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th is written.
So moved.
Second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's changed.
Okay. Thank you. Now, what was your concern on the August 21st minutes?
On page 2, line 41, the vote was 3 to 1. I voted in opposition to that.
Okay.
And then-
Page 2?
Page 2, under the vote, line 41.
Line 41.
Vote of 1, Taja Singer, opposed.
3 to 1.
Yeah, 3 to 1, right.
And then, page 3, you'll notice line 35 is blank. But what I propose to be inserted there, which is inserted in two other locations, which is accurate. Selectman Chivilingam recommended this go-to-warrant article due to the far-reaching implications of the project. So basically, I'm proposing that you take on page, line, or page 4, line 26 to 27, beginning with the word "Selectmen," ending with the word "project," that you copy that and also put it in line 35 from page 3. Because I stated that for each of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was concurrent talk, yeah, I do remember that.
Okay.
So you say in line, page 4, line 26?
Yeah.
Put that, copy that, and send it.
26 and 27 leads off public comments requested. And then, Selectmen Chivilingam, right after that.
Yeah, not the entire sentence, actually, to be more accurate. Everything up to the word "project," up to and including the word "project."
Okay.
The other part was correctly placed in the other locations, but. And then there's one other. Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Ready.
Page 6, line 18. The vote there was actually unanimous. I voted in favor of that.
Yes, sir, follow.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Motion to approve the re-corrected minutes of October 21st.
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda. We have a general fund manifest in the amount of $126,721 and a payroll manifest of $12,945. So I will sign them, I will pass them to you, Casey. And we'll continue while those are being signed. Department heads, fire chief.
If you call it a previous meeting, I think before you would ask for permission to use funds from the ambulance revenue account to pursue the contract for ambulance billing.
Yep.
And I understand that there's some pushback or some question among some people that challenged the idea of using the funds for that. So instead of creating an issue, what I'd like to do is just go ahead and do that, using funds from my current budget. And I would be deleting some planned things that I had in wanting to do that I prioritized. Maybe this is an issue that needs to move forward.
Okay.
And with your permission, I will do that and cover the expenses within my current budget.
Right. Well, it is a bottom-line budget and, you know, you can feel, I think you best know what things you can move around. And I would just ask if there are any objections on the board to that.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I don't have any objections. I would like some clarification as to what lines you're going to be pulling from.
Absolutely. Right now, I'm looking at, well, you know, if I put it in the contracted services, which is really most related to, although it is a one-time expense, I'm trying to match it up with a line that would have some relevance to the issue itself. And that would overspend that line. However, in the bottom line, where the cut would actually come would be, I would not move ahead with the project to convert the exhaust collecting system on the lower apparatus floor project, which I had planned to do this year. But if I use the $2,500 somewhere else, I would need to take it from that project, probably. Those are working okay, the way they're being used now, so it's adequate. So I would forego that until next year and hopefully have money in that line to take care of that project and finish it. So I would, you know, I don't give a vote, but I would, you know, need some consensus, so I would move forward with that.
Do you have that line number? Do you know that line number offhand or no?
Oh, my gosh, no.
No?
Yeah, I just asked-
I can find that information for you. And I would, when I submit the bill, when it comes, it will have the line number on it.
I asked if there are any objections. And as we know, it is a bottom-line budget. And, you know, Chief Heath is free to make adjustments in his budget to meet his budget. And unless there's some real concern that that's not appropriate, then I think it's fine to go forward with that. So I'm looking for objections rather than to a vote at this point.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I prefer to make a motion.
Fine, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that Chief Heath can expend from the contracted services line.
That will overextend that line, but I'm trying to match it up so it makes sense on point. And we're not rolled forward to next year, as I said, this is a one-time expense.
I'll second said motion.
Yeah, for the purpose of making the one-time payment.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else? Yes?
Doesn't overturn the agenda, but I-
But that's all right.
It came in a little bit late. And that's the request for a purchase order for the hose purchase. For the last several years, we've been conducting hose testing. And we lose a line here, a line there. You know, and we don't replace it right away. But we've accumulated an amount of hose that now we're making a hose purchase and to restart on some pieces that are, you know, failed. So, and, you know, again, that's instead of going on buying all new hose for everything, it's just we try to replace it as it goes. And that's along that line. And that was a planned expense out of the-
You said it was a planned expense? Okay. What is the amount?
I don't have that.
$4,526.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, it's here.
Will you continue to use the expired hoses for training purposes? Is that what you usually would do?
It's not really safe for anything that's run under pressure. And if we're training with it, we're running it at the actual pressures that we would use in an incident. You know, if we can use it for, say, if we're pumping a basement and we're not pressurizing, we're just running it from some pump out the window in, you know, someplace, we can use it for that.
Okay. I would like to make the motion to allow Chief Heath to expend $4,526 for the purchase of new hose.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's okay. Anything else to you? Okay, thank you. Any other department heads here that would like to? Okay. Oh, business. Whipple House Museum, removal and replacement of the tree on site. We did receive a letter from David Rule, the president of the Historical Society, pointing out that they had gotten permission to remove a tree that was invading the foundation of the Whipple House. And there was a suggestion at that time that they plant another one in its place. And I'll just read this paragraph. "The suggestion that such a new tree be in memory of James Godville, who was a town employee, is admirable. However, the board believes that this is not an obligation of the Historical Society but of the town. Another longtime employee of the town, Stephen Lyford, passed away in July. Will a tree be planted in his honor? Perhaps memorial trees of this type should be planted on other town property or even more appropriately, in the memorial park." So I would like some discussion on this issue.
Well, I being the one that suggested that, at that time, I had not known that, you know, Stephen had also passed away. I think that would be a good idea. Also, we should consider that punky dispatch as well.
And where would said funds come from? I mean, I'm all in favor of planting trees, but yes, Charlie?
So, we had a department head meeting and talked about this this week. Instead of planting trees, what we thought about doing, would like to do, is we're going to have a memoriam page in the town report and recognize these individuals that served the town in this year's town report.
Yeah, I personally think that's a good idea.
And that's forever.
If we go down the path of planting trees, meaning people die every year, and, you know, not to disrespect anybody, but-
We'll have an orchard.
Well, that's okay. But, you know, to have them recognized in writing is probably a good thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to hear from the members of the public that can-
Yes, please do.
We're actually on the board of directors with the Historical Society.
Yeah, so you're in agreement with the request?
Right, again, because also Funky Marsh did pass away even after my brother Steve. So all of a sudden, you've got, you know, three people.
Yeah.
We have no problem, obviously, removing the tree because it is infringing on the Whipple House shed. So that's not an issue. We are having to expend $700 because they're going to need a crane to come in because of the way it's so close to the Toy Museum and the Whipple. So that's already an expense. And we just felt like to have to put another tree somewhere else. We really don't have a spot. And our front lawn right now really needs, we haven't got a long-term plan for that area because we're trying to concentrate on fixing the Whipple House building itself at this point. So we're trying to do the minimum as far as landscaping and focus on what needs to be done to maintain the structure of the house first. And then, once we're beyond all those repairs, then we'd be in a position to really look at more of a lot and that type of thing.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I think it is understandable that they'd like to remove the memorial component of that decision. But I still think that it's ecologically prudent and supportive to replace the tree that you're cutting down with another tree.
Even though there's no animal habitat or anything being impeded by animals?
Well, thank you for asking a follow-up question, if I may answer, Madam Chair.
Well, okay, we had to promise everybody, so go right ahead.
I'd love to know, have you actually walked the grounds of the Whipple House?
Yes.
And you see how many trees are on the grounds?
I spent some time with Mr. Rule there.
Most more trees have to come down. And I think the suggestion would be to get a true arborist to come in because I don't think you're an expert and I don't think Dave is an expert in trees.
Kathleen, yes?
That corner of the building was quite the scum haven last year. The Historical Society had to incur the cost of trapping the animals and removing them, where they did, 13 of them. So it's an area on the property that really needs some, doesn't eat any more vegetation. That's probably one of the most, more vegetative village lots. The whole perimeter is heavily wooded. And it wasn't a heritage tree. It was a volunteer tree from-
Okay.
The fringe.
Yep, and there are a lot of volunteer trees out there. No, I've had to take them down on my property, even though I'm all in favor of trees, but sometimes you have to make a different decision. And I personally think it's unfair to impose that upon a limited budget for the Heritage, for the Historical Society, sorry. And so, you know, I understand Mr. Chivilingam's concerns about ecology, but I think that the wise thing to do would be to think of other ways that we can contribute to the ecology in other places where it's more suitable. Other comments? Yes?
You had enough.
I was showing my water.
Sorry. I saw him.
Thank you. No, I've said everything I need to say.
Perhaps in the future, this is something we would like to take up, maybe think of Arbor Day when our actual trees apply free of charge, do you plant it anymore enough? Or even just to plant the trees to offset the nitrogen.
And I would like to put in a plug for the future sidewalk project in Main Street on beautification and adding plantings. That's for another day, another conversation, because I'm all in favor of adding appropriate vegetation where it's appropriate, so.
It's a good idea when you design, yeah, when we design that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would like a motion to support Mr. Rule's request on not having to replace this tree at the Whipple House.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Mr. Rule's request, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Who said nay?
You two.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this?
3, 2, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, sorry, Susan, go right ahead.
I just have, on a legal basis, do you really have the authority to mandate a nonprofit that is in charge of the property?
Probably not.
Just expend money on something that wasn't in part of the lease agreement or any other agreement?
No, it's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm sure we did not, but-
I didn't ask anybody to incur funds, that's why I mentioned Arbor Day and the free trees that provided by the new-
Well, Arbor Day, you know, we can talk about all kinds of places, not just the Whipple House.
Return sand, turn it back.
Well, I mean, in that matter, your first initial replacement, you do not specify any size tree whatsoever. They could have gone down to the state.
You could have got one out of the sidewalk if you wanted to.
And then the plaque would have been bigger than the tree, so.
I'm not asking anyone to incur costs, I'm just saying that there's free trees out there and that perhaps at some point down the road, we can think about it. That's why I voted against it.
Well, but the immediate request was-
You're not voting against.
Right, trees, we're voting against.
No, I'm not voting against trees, no. Merely that the replacement should be done at some point, doesn't have to be there. That's not the motion, I don't think.
No, it's not the motion. It was granting Mr. Rule's request that we put, we take that stipulation off of the Historical Society that they plant a tree at the Whipple House to replace the one that must be taken down. That was the motion.
So you saying nay is wrong.
Madam Chair?
It's my opinion.
Yes.
I'd just like to remind the board that only, we only need a majority of the quorum to move a motion. The motion has been passed.
Yes, it has. But we've asked the public for their input and it was a fair comment.
Madam Chair, the discussion, though, however, was complete prior, you know, there was discussion prior to the motion for the public.
Moving on. The NHDOT TAP grant. We reviewed some engineering qualifications reports and we voted on them. And Charlie, I understand you've come up with some additional information.
After your vote, I talked to NHDOT and it's not that the vote is wrong per se. There's concerns that it's not sufficient.
Okay.
If the firms that were not selected asked for documentation, the minutes basically aren't enough. You know, we have to provide documentation as to why they weren't selected.
Okay.
So we can handle this one of a few ways. You can just interview all the firms and, you know, just be done with it. Or you can fill out this letter of qualification evaluation process form. Or you can have me fill it out because I am LPA certified.
What is your recommendation?
I don't really have one. It's up to what the consensus of the board wants to do.
Well, my concern is that, I mean, some of these things we can evaluate appropriately, but I'm not sure that we have all the information we need necessarily to rate them appropriately. I mean, we can all take a stab, but I think we all come at it from a slightly different perspective. I would feel more comfortable if you did it and we discussed it, or if we all did it and you got a vote, or you just interviewed them all.
Right.
I mean, as I-
Well, no, I want to interview, no, this is just to select firms for the interview.
Right, I understand that. But, I mean, I think I stated at the outset of the discussion last time that actually they all looked qualified.
Right.
And so we were basing it on, I'm assuming, some subjective thoughts toward them. So, you know, what else do people think about this, doing this form and how are we going to do it? And what is the timing?
Basically on presentation, that's what we were voting for when we come down to it.
Yeah, and I'm just not sure that that's sufficient.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like the board to consider rating them independently. I have taken the time to fill out one of the letters of qualification evaluation forms. It does take time, but I found it very informative. And I would like to have the perspective of the other board members in making that decision.
That's fine. So when is our deadline, Charlie? I mean, we can't do this tonight, obviously.
Right.
It's going to take some time. And then we'd have to tabulate all of the responses. And I would also like to add that I think your opinion is incredibly needed. You've had more experience with some of these firms than any of the rest of us. And you've also had conversations with other town administrators and you probably know things about reputation, for example, that we wouldn't have privy to. So I think it behooves you to give us your strong opinions on these as well.
Yeah, I can do that as well.
So getting back to timing, when would that have to be?
It's when you can get them done.
Okay, when is our next meeting? Don't we have to have this done by the-
This project really isn't going to construction until, what'd they tell us, last 2019?
Okay. So if we would have-
But we can start getting into contracts, sorry.
Okay, no, that's not-
We can get into contract negotiations in October.
Okay. But we're almost into October and we're halfway through September, so we don't want to delay this ad nauseam. So, I mean, we can do this at our first meeting, which is October 2nd?
Yeah, we could. There's two weeks, right? I think two weeks.
We bring one in for each.
Bring, we have to get copies for each one of them and, you know, be prepared to discuss it. And then I assume we tabulate the answers and come up with a consensus.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I recommend that the board consider having Mr. Smith do the reference check. That is one of the eight items. And it might save us all time just to have him do that as one person contacting you.
Yeah, well, I was wondering if that referred to the fact that each one of them had, I suppose you'd need to contact those references, but each one of them listed all the projects they've done for various towns. But, yeah, probably a call to the TA would be well worth the time.
So by October, what was the date?
The 2nd, I think that's our next meeting, is that correct?
And we bring them in here?
Bring them in here.
Okay.
We probably would need to do it non-public if we're discussing individuals.
Did you want to bring, you want to drop them off before and then maybe we can announce on the 2nd?
We can do that?
If you drop, you know, if you do that on the 2nd, probably slow it down because I would have to tabulate all of them.
Okay, so get them to Charlie well before the 2nd and he can do the tabulation. So then we can have a brief discussion.
Yeah, I think that would work better.
And are we still going to select three or four to interview? Would that be planned?
Still, one, three? Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, anything else, Charlie, on that?
No.
All right. Project list?
Project list. Okay, the TAP grant, I think we pretty much just covered that topic. The Thompson Street Road project, we received our letter for, from the State Revolving Fund that we were, we qualified, next step. We could move forward with an application, but really, that needs town vote, approval more than anything.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
So we need to put that on our warrant article list?
Yes, yeah. The GIS mapping, CAI Technology is available Monday, September 25th at 11:00. Does that work for everyone?
Does it?
I think we can tentatively, I'm okay with tentatively planning it, or for itself, and then I'm sure we'll-
Well, as long as we get a-
Because I think Lee's told me before it worked for Lee.
Yeah, for me, it works. Okay, Casey, if you can get, okay, if you can get, you know, the time off, great. But I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're fine with 11 a.m.?
Yeah.
And that's it, town hall?
Yes, upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty, LW Packard Mill Site. Nova started work in September since the last time we met. You know, they're going to do two hazmat survey at the same time. Other than that, I don't really have much updates on that, but that is continuing to move forward. The Riverwalk Maintenance Cleanup.
I just noticed here it says that they'd be done by the 15th. Have they completed that?
I haven't received anything since. And they would send that to the state and hopefully copy us on that.
Right.
You know, that one, that one gets sent.
I, I think the last time I spoke with them, they said we'd get a report by October.
Yeah, okay. The Riverwalk Maintenance Cleanup, that was placed on hold for a bit. So to give the 150th Committee time to have a walk-through with DPW because they were going to put the bell there, I believe. Thought about putting the bell there?
The monument?
Yeah, for the mon, for the 150th celebration. The Town Office Building Fire Alarm, that was installed, the first phase of that. We still need to get the smoke detectors in there. But that is pretty much finished until we're ready to take the next step. The Volunteer Recognition Day, I think, was a success. I don't know if Fran wants to, you have any further comment?
No, we had, we had a fantastic turnout. And again, thanks to Greg Moore and his DPW guys. A lot of work had done before we got there and so there was very little for us to do. But I think it was well received. I'm, I'm very happy with the way things came out.
And we should have pictures in this week's paper.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Good. The Town Building Telecommunication, the fiber optic cable was installed. We just need First Light to come in and finish it. Their work order does say by October 5th, so. The Town Office Building Maintenance, I was going to say a couple of things that the DPW did for the building. They, we recoded the parking lot, the parking lines were repainted, the entryway was repainted, the benches were stained, weeds were cleared from the building, the front garden was weeded, and the bricks on the old jail was taken care of. Did I miss anything?
I think you did some painting at the jailhouse as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, painted the trim there too.
There's also some paving that was done there. It wasn't just the, the ceiling. Remember, probably-
Yeah, the pavings are stripped, yeah.
That's really great.
Yeah. Speaking of that building, we need to do a little bit more work for that jail. Can I make a comment, Craig?
Well, the, the concrete that keeps the bricks together needs to be repainted at some point. When we washed it, it came out like sand. So you could have just poured water on it and it just washed it away.
Yeah.
To the point where it's old and it needs to be replaced. So keep that in mind for future projects.
Yeah, next summer, we thought.
And that's, probably a professional would have to do that.
Okay. I, I also understood there's an issue with the door.
Yeah, the doors, the door is a piece of plywood. It's not to the period. I'm sure it rotted off one time and, and then somebody put a piece of plywood up there to make, make ship door and it's just never been replaced to what it should be, probably.
I believe Katie Marr was looking for an old door that she could-
She did mention that, yeah.
And she's continuing to do that, so it'd be nice to replace that.
Do we have any photos of what the old door looked like? So we can make it similar?
I don't know, but check with the Historical Society.
Yeah, David?
We have one picture.
I'm sure it'll look better than plywood in any case.
Yeah, it will.
Okay.
All right, Lake, Lake Region Planning Commission, the Culvert Assessment Report. We should have that by the end of the month. The road plan, we just, Craig's been busy and needs to take, you know, get a day where he can actually look at the prioritization plan. They're down a guy over there. He hasn't really had much time. But hopefully by the end of October, we should be able to get that report.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Okay. Any questions on any of the remaining things?
We had some forward movement on the electric department, new building, correct? Did you want to speak on that? Intern Director do some work over there or you have some work going? Do you'd like to share the public at this time, or is that still in the process of getting going?
Well, I met with the commissioners two weeks ago, probably. And they committed up to $10,000 to correct the problem. But this, late in the year, it's very difficult to get a contractor to come back to us. So we're, we're right now trying to find some contractors willing to do that small project. So I do have one interested, but he's busy and I'm playing phone tag with him to get a date. But the good news is they can, they committed 10 grand to, to do that project. And I think that'll fix the, the issue we have with the runoff. And we've done some other work to the salt shed to seal that off if it ever happened again. At least we've, we've coded that and done some work on our own end to, to fix that in case it happens again and this doesn't work. So we should be good in the future. I think 10 grand's good. That's, that's a good step forward for them to put that money up for.
Thank you, Craig. I would also like to make a motion that we add to this project list. The issue with the speed bumps at the beach, so that it stays in front of us.
Yes.
We do have the fall and the winter to discuss it, but we need to not let it slip through the cracks. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
For the discussion. Yes.
While I definitely think it needs to be addressed, you know, I've seen some things on the project list that kind of just, they linger and I, and like I'm looking at two town personnel policy and building permit fees and they've been sitting there for a while. I'm concerned that if it goes on the project list, it will kind of just linger and it won't be addressed. I'd rather create an action plan over the next, you know, two or three meetings.
But the fact is, we-
Get the people over here to talk about what we need to talk about and then, you know, address it.
I hear you, but the fact is, if it's on the project list, it's in front of us every single meeting. And we won't just overlook it. That's the reason for having this project list. And I don't intend to linger. We do have a timeline on this. We can, you know, move it further up on the list, but I, I think this is where it needs to go. Because I don't think we're going to solve it in two, three meetings necessarily. So, you know, we, we need to move forward. But anyway, that's the discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of putting this on the project list, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. New business. There's nothing on the agenda. Anybody have any new business they want to discuss? No, okay. Select, uh, select board items, investment policy. We started talking about this last week and Mr. Sidlingham made a suggestion that we add eligible credit unions to this. Is there any more research done on this? Or any more thoughts given to this?
No, I, my thought was banks recognized by the state treasurer should be sufficient enough for credit union. Credit unions can't do business without recognition from the state of treas, state treasurer.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I read through the RSA's and, you know, that were attached and it appears to me that it's pretty fixed. While, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, I think maybe the treasurer would be in a better place to say or maybe, you know, consulting with legal on it. But the RSA seems pretty fixed in terms of, you know, just the verbiage of bank, unfortunately, because I think it would be nice to have.
Right.
So in that case, that issue is off the table, is what I'm hearing, and we still need a vote on signing this thing?
Or approve.
Approve of this thing. So can I have a motion to improve, improve, upprove the investment policy as written?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did some research and I went to the Government Finance Officers Association and they have a list of best practices for collateralizing public deposits. Now, I'm not in any way implying that the treasurer has not fallen those best practices. However, I think it might be good to consider including, or at least reviewing, the benefits of including the best practices under the Section 5 labeled prudence.
Well, there's nothing to say we can't make this better as we go along, but I think it behooves us to at least approve what's written. That's suffice for a while and, and I'm more than happy to continue those discussions if we can make improvements on it. But if we delay this vote on approving, you know, that discussion could go on for weeks. And I think we at least need to have in place that we've approved the current investment policy. Thoughts?
Is there somebody we could add an amendment to later after concur with the treasurer, making sure that we-
There's no reason why we can't.
With the RSA.
Absolutely no reason why we can't. You know, this is cast in stone at that point. It's just for the moment approved so we can continue to do business.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My, I just answered the question. Yeah, actually on page three, under Section 12 Culvert, it says the Select and Research are right to implement changes to this policy.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded to approve the investment policy as adopted in August 20 of 2007. Is, follows in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Liaison reports.
I have a stuff with our-
Oh, you have a stuff, I'm sorry, okay, yes.
Can I have the liaison report?
Yeah.
I ran into Tony yesterday and had a casual conversation about how many drug calls that we have to go on now and how, how horrific it is and our EMTs and our police. And it came to my attention that we might be needing more equipment to keep our officers and our EMT officials safe. I believe that he said we could use some masks, some goggles, some gloves. It's getting to the point where we're endangering our employees. And I haven't gone as far as any cause or where it's going to come from, but I wanted to bring it up. And Tony's here if he wants to.
Tony, you have some comments?
He didn't know I was going to bring this up.
That's common, off guard, but yeah, it's recommended that we have certain ventilation masks that we wear when we go to these overdose desks because we don't know what we're dealing with.
Right.
And, you know, the proper gloves and goggles to go over us to protect our eyes.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that it's not going to get on our pants or whatever and then we leg it somewhere and who knows?
Yeah.
It kills our family or whoever, whoever comes up against it. I mean, it's, it's that dangerous.
It's very, it's very toxic.
Some of the stuff is that dangerous.
And it's aerosolized, as I know.
Just go watch the news, you'll see. And they're not lying about it.
No, I know.
It really happens. As I said to Lee, I get very frustrated when I go to these calls. Because I see all of our EMTs all over these bodies and everything and they, they're trying to save the people, okay? But they haven't got the proper stuff on. I'm looking at them going, no, you guys aren't wearing respirators and, okay? I have a guy on my department that's a member of the DEA clam lab team, okay? And I will have discussions with him about what we should probably wear when we go there. So I'll work on that end of it.
I, I personally think it's a high priority.
About a quick, about a quickness.
Yeah.
Number, number one priority.
Yeah, Chief, do you have anything to say as well? I mean, you go on to these calls as well.
Yeah, and I agree with Tony. And our, we have the appropriate equipment. I mean, one of the issues is some of our people are perhaps not wearing. We have N95 masks.
Okay.
And we, you know, so we have access to that material. We have Tyvek gowns, that sort of thing. But it's really pretty hard when you're getting in there because time is of the essence. So, you know, probably we tend to rush in a little bit more than we should, probably. But we do train on these incidents and we talk about situational awareness and, you know, observing what's there, what you see, and they know to back away if they make, you know, observe certain things that they just need to take care of themselves and back away until we get properly outfitted.
Okay. Well, again, I think this is high priority and, you know, please do your research. And I would imagine you'd have to support the entire board on doing this.
Yeah, you could get us a list.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'll, I'll ask my guy and see what he would recommend because, I mean, he deals with the stuff.
Right.
There are companies out there where you can buy these kits and everything. To be quite honest with you, there's not enough time for us to jump into a Tyvek suit and, you know, get totally, because that's what these guys are doing. They're running in there, their first response is, and they're trying to save lives.
Of course.
And we show up at the same time they do, generally speaking. Sometimes before. And a lot of times we'll go in and then we'll back out of this situation and let them come in to do their jobs.
And please know how grateful we are for your service. And this, this is, this is a really bad situation. And we appreciate you putting your bodies and your lives on the line for this. So much gratitude. And again, Lee, thank you for bringing it up.
And I'll do a little more research on it.
Okay, appreciate it. Yes, Tayshia Sten.
Madam Chair, I was wondering this, this management letter for, that followed the audit, I was, there were some suggestions in here, some recommendations, like policy type recommendations. I was wondering what the board would like to do with them, or what they'd generally do with them on a yearly basis.
In all honesty, in the past, we never got the management letter. This is a refreshing new change. And I do think that we ought to sit down and discuss it and, and look at the recommendations as we go forward.
Will we implement them?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been implemented. Yeah, in finance, those things have been implemented.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other select board items before I move on to liaison reports? Okay. Lee, you said you had a liaison report.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that tomorrow morning, Margine and I are on a subcommittee for the planning board to meet with, Mike is, Mike, right, Mike is I from LRPC. And we're going, we're a, I guess we're a water mitigation subcommittee, so to speak. And we're going to be discussing the well field and the aquifer, which is very important. So I will report back on that after I meet.
Okay, thank you. Carol, do you have anything? Casey, do you have anything? Tayshia Sten, do you have anything?
No, but Madam Chair, I wanted, I wanted to just mention something that Select and Sharps raised that I thought was a good reminder. I went to the 91A training with NHMA. And something that they reminded us of is that subcommittees also have to post. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that this subcommittee hasn't or that other subcommittee, subcommittees haven't. But it was a helpful reminder to me that subcommittees are also obligated to follow the same posting procedures-
Public body.
As a public body.
Absolutely, it's a good reminder. So thank you for that.
Minutes two?
Yeah, minutes two, absolutely. Yeah, they're subject to all the same 91A rules.
Right.
Okay, I have a few. I attended the Budget Committee as, as the alternative liaison, alternate liaison. It was a fairly straightforward meeting. We discussed a couple of questions that they had asked of Parks and Rec Department. We discussed the DPW. We discussed the tax collector, town clerk, the few administrative items, including-
Patriotic purposes?
Yeah, patriotic purposes. So it was just a discussion. There were no votes taken. I also attended recently an economic development meeting at the fire station. And we had an invited guest at that meeting, Jack Dugan of the Menadnok Economic Development Corporation. And each of the economic development groups might do slightly different things. And this guy was very much involved, Charlie, you could probably say that and I, in lots of community development projects. He was just amazingly helpful with some ideas and information. And we have to speak with our own economic commission, which is the Grafton County, and find out if, if they are, in fact, they've reorganized and whether or not they take on those kinds of projects that Menadnok has done. And if so, then Jack Dugan and Menadnok would be happy to work with them. So a lot of good things happening on the economic development front. We're getting a lot of good information. We have another meeting tomorrow night, so keep you posted. Finally, I attended as the alternate to the Heritage Commission meeting that met, met with, of the budding 4th of July Committee. It was a rather contentious discussion, I must say. There's a lot of misinformation going around town, gee, what a surprise, about motives and funding and everything else. And I had to leave before it was over. And Kathleen, you probably stayed. I don't know if there was any resolution. As of the time I was there, given the fact that they have to, if, if in fact they vote to leave the Heritage Commission, then we have to accept them. And we have to lay down our own rules and laws and, and accept their budget as the Heritage Commission. I think there was a misunderstanding on their part that they were third tier if they were under the Heritage Commission. We tried to explain the Heritage Commission does not report to the Board of Selectment. So either they report to them or they report to us. So there's really no difference. And now they're going to have to go through the whole thing all over again, coming with us. But they're going to stay with the Heritage Commission temporarily until they decide to move on or we decide to take them on. And we'll have to have a discussion about what that's going to entail. It's a lot of money involved, a lot of people that aren't even town residents. So, you know, we've got a lot to learn by taking them on. Kathleen, was there anything else you'd like to add to that?
I was totally perplexed what the issue was. Really, I, I don't know where the information came from. It was so, it was so wrong. They seemed to come in with chips on their shoulders. They threw up some pretty unpleasant accusations. Like, Lee, he was still there for that. To the point where the new chair said that she was going to contact DRA, the IRS.
Yeah, there were hints of financial malfeasance and-
I don't know where it came from. They didn't do their homework before they came in front of the, the permission, if they had asked.
It's, it's been explained before.
Well, I'm sure.
And that's why I said-
Why they, why we were underneath the umbrella of the Aspen Park and Rec.
And that's why I was perplexed.
Is where it started. And then they didn't want the liability, so it went to the Heritage. And it was all about liability and insurance.
And we went through-
And they didn't want to be on their own back when they asked to be under the umbrella of-
That's why I was perplexed. It, it took a lot of time and effort to get this committee protected.
Yeah.
The volunteers protected, the flow of money protected. There's a lot of cash involved. It's run smoothly for what, four or five years now? Last year, it was the first time under Heritage. You know, we told them, oh, we are facilitators.
They also made the assumption that they couldn't even get started unless they had control of the money. And I wasn't quite sure why they needed control of the money at this point, because you don't spend money till the end. You make your plans. And anyway, I think there's still some confusion and misunderstanding. Some of them had had experience with 501(c)(3)'s.
Which is totally different.
Which is totally different than working as a municipal subcommittee. So we've got a lot of discussions still to do to make sure that if and when we have to take them over, we have an understanding of, of what we need and they have an understanding of what the expectations are. So.
It was, it was unpleasant.
It was unpleasant.
This is the face of Ashland.
Yeah, I know.
And you want to put forward the best face possible. And it, it was, that is not how it was portrayed by that meeting. It was, I, I, even though I wasn't involved with 4th of July, I mean, I, I was offended by some of the comments. And it was just, what a, it started off on the wrong foot.
Yeah.
And it's really too bad because everything ran so smoothly.
I know. We hope that we can improve it, at least the relationships and keep things moving.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you were there. And you gave, you gave a lot of points, you know, speaking as a, as a select board member that they hadn't even considered.
I'm sure. Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate that. Any other liaison reports? Okay, we have at least one more public comment. Ann Laterno, would you like to speak to us? You live on Thompson Street?
Yes, I live on 69 Thompson Street. I bought the house 21 years ago and it's always been residential. Well, somebody new, I guess, bought the place. I'm not sure who has it. But they told my husband that- that they bought that as a commercial industrial property, which I don't know how they can do that when it's commercial. This is what my next-door neighbor looks like in junkyard. He, it, it's a, it's a junkyard. There's cars in and out of there all the time. Um, all this stuff, these things, these trucks and that, they stay there. It's the cars and other trucks that come in and out. When I bought it, I bought it to retire peacefully.
Okay.
And they're practically on my property, but not to, or next door.
Okay, well, I think we need to, uh, look into this, investigate what's going on. It might be a planning board, or zoning board, or code enforcement office, code enforcement issue, but we do need to investigate.
Was it the, the planning board? Who, who asked you? Oh, my husband wanted to open up a shop under our garage. I live on Thompson Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Right here, he wanted to repair lawnmowers, you know, but you cannot do that.
Well, you need a special exception for, yes. There are certain rules around, um, home occupation businesses.
I think that did what, if it's where I'm thinking about, did have a special exception. That was like 10 years ago.
I'm not on the, the.
Yeah, we have to investigate the history of it and find out what, you know, but, but if you please leave that information with the town hall, we will certainly.
Uh, I'm not sure if it was the building inspector or.
Charlie, do you know what happened to that?
I believe this is the one that we sent the building inspector out to see.
Okay.
Who didn't see a junkyard. I don't know if this is the same property.
But about any commercial industry that, that's there that doesn't have property, so we need to check into that as well.
So we'll have to look into whether or not it's zoned in.
That's why we, we had taken this, and I guess when he went, he only saw that white car.
Yeah.
This is all behind the building, which I, I don't want to say somebody warned them, but somebody warned them, because I went to the town hall, and then from there, I went to the post office. And on my way back, all the cars were leaving. So I'm just assuming somehow they found out I was there, so I'll leave this with you.
Sure.
We will investigate further and, and find out some history of the property and everything, and find out what.
Thank you, because it's always been residential, so I don't know how you can just turn it without notifying us, so, thank you.
We'll look into it. Um, you alert the planning board as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're alerted.
Yeah.
No, we're alerted.
Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Jim Davis, but I think it's a liability. I have nine grandchildren. They were here now, younger. They'd be all over that equipment, and if somebody gets hurt.
Right.
There's big stuff out there.
Okay.
Comes and goes, so just a little, you can make.
No, I appreciate that, and don't ever hesitate to bring these things to our attention, because, you know, if it's improper, we should.
Impossible.
Yeah, well, we'll figure it out. Okay. I mean, I live off Thompson Street too, but I.
Oh, you see it.
Yeah, okay. What is, what is the address on Thompson?
I believe it's 61.
61. Okay, we will, we will check into it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Uh, any other public comments? No, okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to go into, uh, non-public pursuant to RSA 91A, colon, 3, Roman number 2, small letter a. Uh, that would be, uh, dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee. Um, got a motion?
I'll make that.
One second.
Okay.